All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation on the ground in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, starting off a roll call, all of our board members here, and Chloe is here. Good to see you again.
Tori's not running.
What? Tori's not here. Oh, sorry. That's right, and Tori's got an excused absence, too. Got to look to my right more often. All right. For the agenda, I first want to propose that we switch Agenda Items Five and Six in their order, so that Student Achievement goes before Governance. And with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved. All right, got through that one without screwing it up. All right, Communications. We are going to start with Forter, Dr. Moss. What's that?
It says Beasley on the screen.
Does it? All right, we can start with Beasley. It just seems like it's gonna be one of those kind of nights, so. Yeah, it's happening to you, too.
It's on, probably. There it goes, thank you. Good evening, I'm Andrea Dean, I'm the principal at Beasley Elementary, and we are going to recognize one of our newest clubs at Beasley Elementary, and so our sponsors and some of the students are here to tell you a little bit about our new club. It's the Common Bond Buddies Club.
Hi, I'm Tammy Hagley, and I'm a first grade teacher at Beasley, and I started an after-school club called the Common Bond Buddies. We meet once a week, for an hour, and this club is for children who have lost a loved one. I'm not a therapist, but I do share a common bond with my club members. I lost my dad when I was nine years old, and through my experiences, I feel I can offer hope, love, support, and encouragement to these children. And this is Lindsay.
Hello, I am Lindsay Meyer, and I'm the social worker at Beasley Elementary School, and I'm the co-sponsor of the club. I have also experienced a lot of loss in my life, and I'm very excited to have the opportunity to support all of these children.
Our goal is to build relationships with other children who have a common bond. We offer a safe space to talk about their feelings, which could be a range of feelings, since we all deal with grief in a different way. We focus on our good memories, we have done some crafts, listened to some great books about grief, and done mindful exercises. We have great discussions, and just enjoy building relationships with each other. And Faith, you want to come over? Let's see, can I take this off? Okay. This is Faith Moses.
We get snacks, we traced our body to find the body part that is affected by our feelings. My heart aches when I think about my dad. I liked making an ornament because it was a special memory of my dad on my Christmas tree.
Good job, Faith. And this is Ava Vogel.
We do lots of fun things, we made this puzzle of how we feel. This puzzle represents our heart. Our hearts were broken when we lost our loved ones, but our memories helped put our hearts back together. Our heart will never be the same, but we know we will always be loved.
This is another member of our family, of our Common Bond Buddies, okay? And this is Daya Stewart.
Hi.
And this is Jeremiah Ford.
Hi.
All right, so these are our brave members of our club, and we thank you for recognizing them today.
As you can see, this was a club that we've been wanting to start for a while, but it's a tough topic, whenever you're talking about grief and children, but we love that we are able to give support, and we have great supportive parents as well helping us with this. So they want to get a picture of you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, I am Whitney Moss, principal at Forter Elementary, and I'm here to share a little bit about our Strings program at Forter. And if you didn't know, Forter is the only elementary school that has strings for third through fifth grade. It started way back in 1998, when Aurelia Hartenberger was the Director of Music Education, and she wrote a grant through VH1 Save the Music. And she wrote that grant, and it allowed us to have thirty violins, four violas, three cellos, and two double basses at Forter. And at that time, it was a third and fourth grade program, and then Mrs. Archer was our music specialist. Seventeen years ago, she retired, and Dr. Sarah Butchko, who isn't in town this evening, she's really disappointed she couldn't come, so I'm sure she's watching, she is our music specialist now, and she added fifth grade into the program at that time. And then we've been replacing instruments through District Fine Arts budget, as they have been retiring or having issues. So we currently have one hundred and seventy-five Forter students that participate in Strings. There are twenty-seven middle school Berkeley students that are in Strings with Mrs. Meshky. Twenty-four of the twenty-seven came from Forter Elementary. And sixty-two high school students play Strings between the two high schools, and twenty-nine of those sixty-two are Forter students. So we're really proud of our Strings program, and I brought some students here, ranging from high school to kids that are at Forter now, to just tell you about their Strings experience.
Good evening, my name is Josh Kahn, I'm a senior at Melville High School. First, I would like to start off by saying thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As you know, I'm here in regards to speaking about my experiences within the orchestra program over the years. Starting at the beginning of time within the program, I started off a little bit behind the curve. I came to Forter as a fourth grader, and this was a bit of a challenge, as most of the students were fairly ahead compared to me. But with the help of Dr. Butchko, she did an outstanding job catching me up with the rush of the class, so I was able to participate within class. Over the next two years, I was able to further my experience into the program, starting out as a violinist, where I did not stay long. After about six months, I moved into playing the double bass, which is what I currently play at Melville High School. After starting this instrument, I found something that I had come to love. Along with this, I started making quite a few friends, as coming into a new school, it is quite hard to find friends. And while playing this instrument, we were given many opportunities to perform for an audience, which grew my love for the instrument and the program. After graduating from fifth grade at Forter, I moved into an upper level performing within the middle school, specifically Berkeley Middle School, under the direction of Amy Meshky. After being taught by Ms. Meshky, I was able to learn much more about my instrument and how to play it. Not only did I grow more to love the instrument, but I was also able to meet new people who I most likely would not have met without this program. These friends that I've started to make since sixth grade, I am still currently friends with as a senior in high school. Under the direction of Ms. Meshky at Melville High School, I was able to do many things, starting with the performances. I performed many times in front of many audiences, which has helped my anxiety problem in front of large groups of people and small groups of people. Secondly, I have been able to take many field trips, like how we go every year to Delmar Gardens, and starting this year Friendship Village, for the residents there, so we were able to play holiday pieces. I was also a part of a few competitions, where we got to show our skills off to people and get feedback. But the most amazing experience was when I was offered to travel to the Lincoln Center in New York City with the St. Louis Community College Orchestra. Sadly, though, due to the pandemic, I was not able to attend, but without this program, I would not have even been able to get the opportunity to be invited. In the end, without the program, I would not be where I am today. I would not have made the friends, or been able to learn a new instrument. By having the orchestra program during the school day at Forter, this really helped to drive my desire for their instrument. End conclusion, I end this by saying thank you for everything the Melville School District Orchestra Program has done for me and my life. Thank you.
Hello and good evening, my name is Mina. I go to Berkeley Middle School, and I'm eighth grade. I began playing violin in third grade, and I continued doing that throughout third and fourth grade, until I switched to bass for fifth grade, and I decided to stick with violin. Being in orchestra is just something that I'm really thankful for, because it's allowed me to learn a lot more about music inside and outside of school, and it's given me passion for the violin, and it's given me a hobby to do outside of school. And I'm really thankful that I was able to make all the friends that I did, and as mentioned, we have been able to go on a lot of field trips, and just things like that, that make me more excited to go to school every single day. And I'm really thankful that I went through with violin throughout middle school and elementary, and it's something that I definitely plan on continuing, so thank you.
My name is Connor, and I play in orchestra, I play the violin, and in music class, I play the double bass. The violin is my favorite instrument, because I've been playing it longer. My favorite piece to play is Can Can. I like being part of orchestra, because it is fun to play instruments.
Due to the pandemic, I started in fourth grade. I like the bow on the violin, and they can do different songs and play different notes using your fingers as well. I like to play Jingle Bells and Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. My name is Jayla.
My name is Lauren, and I started by learning to play the violin by picking, you do not use the bow at first, when you are learning. I learned how to hold and play the violin. My favorite song right now on the violin is Twinkle Twinkle Little Stars.
Thank you so much for letting us share about our Strings program, and since Dr. Butcher couldn't be here to bring kids, Hunter came by and made us a video, so he's gonna be showing that on our school and district social media, so you guys can take a look at some footage he took of kids in action. Thank you.
Thank you. MNEA is up next, Dina.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and happy new year. My name is Dina McKelvey, and I am the president of Melville NEA. Tonight, I'm very excited to be able to honor two students, one from Beasley and one from Forter. So I'm going to have the Beasley teacher and student come up for that award. And this is Josh, and Josh's teacher.
Hello, my name is Amanda Barton, and I am a fifth grade teacher at Beasley. And I wanted to nominate Josh Schaefer for this award, and this is why. Because Josh is the epitome of a high-five student. He's consistently responsible, respectful, cooperative, kind, and safe. He's the type of student you can always count on, whether it be helping out, telling the truth, turning in work on time, and always giving his all in everything he does. He's also very personable, friendly and caring, and always upbeat and positive. I couldn't think of anyone who is more deserving of this award, so congratulations to Josh. Keep up the excellent work, Josh, and keep being you.
All right, thank you. The next student is from Forter, and it's Cameron, and Cameron's teacher.
Hi, I am Krista Kerlik, a fifth grade teacher at Forter, and we, as a team, nominated Cameron for the Student of the Month Award. Cameron is a role model all the time, displaying the Forte Five everywhere she goes. She's kind, caring, and respectful. She works hard to be successful in every subject area. She encourages others to do their best, all while striving to do her best. She is flexible, innovative, and creative. She is someone you can depend on no matter what. Cameron is honest and has the heart of gold. She brings laughter into the classroom and makes all of us smile. She is a friend to everyone, and a friend that anyone can count on, no matter what time. Cameron is caring, she cares for her school and her community. Cameron strives to have a positive attitude every day. Cameron is polite, graceful, and mature, and she is enthusiastic in everything she does. Cameron is a role model that others look up to. Cameron is always yearning to be the best Cameron she can be, and Cameron is nice to everyone she meets, and will one day be a future leader. Cameron, we are so grateful to have you at Forter and part of our Forter family, and we are so proud of you. Thank you, Cameron, for making us all better people.
Thank you so much, as always, for giving us the opportunity to honor these portraits of graduates in their elementary schools.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Just to let everybody know, one of the reasons we changed Student Achievement and Governance, where Student Achievement is going first, is in case any parents want to stay and listen to their school principals give their presentations on the school, so you don't have to wade through extra things. So with that, our next up is open period for patron comments for Agenda Items, and we do not have anybody for that, for that signed up for that, so we are going to move right to Student Achievement, and I think I see Forter up on the overhead there. I don't know if they did it to confuse me, or, anyway.
Alphabetical order, it makes no sense to put Beasley first, right? Okay, so sounds good, let's go ahead and get started, tell you a little bit about Forter Elementary. So our mission has continued to be fostering academic excellence and acceptance for learners to be productive citizens of character in our nurturing and safe school. I have here our school improvement goals, and I'm not gonna read all those to you, but tonight, I'm really gonna hone in on number eight, which is looking at the MTSS framework, and those effective practices for supporting students with academic and behavioral support, while targeting students in need of some different tiered supports of intervention. Just a little enrollment details about Forter, you can see our current statistics there, we have three hundred and seventy-six students. Our EL number has stayed pretty similar, free and reduced, as you've seen across the district, has been dropping. That mostly is because people haven't been filling out those free and reduced lunch forms with the free lunch for everyone, so we have been doing a push with communications to show and emphasize the importance of filling out those free and reduced lunch applications, so that we can get some more of that. IEP rate is up there as well. Here's just a little different view of our enrollment by grade, so you can see what it looks like for free and reduced lunch, EL and IEP by grade level. You won't see any EL kids at the EC, at the early childhood, because we don't identify those students until we're in kindergarten. So you might have seen a few of my kids wearing the Make It Count shirts this evening, and that is our theme for this school year, is making it count every learning opportunity, every day, every Falcon, right? So thinking about how we can really make learning purposeful at Forter, and really make every minute count while they're within our buildings. So what does that look like at Forter? We're using that multi-tiered systems of support to make that happen. This ties back to our school improvement goal, and you might be already familiar with MTSS, the acronym for that, looking at what everybody gets, that universal, that green slice in there, what maybe some kids need, what's a little more targeted instruction, and then what few kids need, that more intensive instruction. With our ESER funds this year, and some other district supports, we've been able to have more supports at Forter than ever. And that's one thing, whenever anybody else says, what do you need at Forter, continuing to be able to have these people would be top of my list. So if you take a look at that post-it note up there, students participating in intensified instruction opportunities, we have a K2 intervention, and then we have a 3-5 interventionist, so they're able to support a hundred students. Remedial reading, students qualify for that program, we have ninety-three students utilizing that opportunity. With our math interventionists, we have a hundred and twenty-three students seen. We also have some Title I paraprofessionals that are supporting some targeted instruction along with the classroom teachers, and we have seventy-nine kids that participate in that. And then we also have an SEL interventionist, and twenty-four students are on her caseload. And I'll tell you a little bit more about those as we go. So taking a look at our different tiers at Forter, and what those look like, at every tier, we have a team of educators that support the efforts for that tier. So you'll be able to kind of see what falls in those different tiers. So at Tier One, we're setting class-wide goals, we're meeting at grade levels. We also have second steps taught every week, sorry about that, by my school counselor, Mrs. Bright. We use zones of regulation, and we've really worked on incorporating phonics and phonemic awareness in our early grades. Thinking about Tier Two, we've added in some student tracking. Mr. Smith has added in Panorama Student Success as a resource for schools, and we have really found that as a great tool, where we're able to track student intervention and progress. We have remedial reading as well, and we've incorporated some friendship groups and some SEL intervention. Tier Three, we're doing some problem solving with function in mind, trying to focus on addressing the function of the behavior. We have special school district services, our SSD team meets the data team to collaborate about data for students receiving their services. We also have remedial reading, that kind of goes in Tier Two, Tier Three, and then we have students that are receiving family counseling, individualized counseling. Taking a look at our ELA and math instruction, this is pretty similar to what we do at other elementaries, we're using that Lucy Cockens Units of Study I-Ready ELA, we're really trying to focus on strategy groups, and targeting the instruction to what specific skills the student has as a deficit, or where we can grow, not just if they're a Level L, picking a Level L book, what about Level L do they need to work on. Looking at math, incorporating that math workshop structure, and having a more guided math approach, so we're strategic to what specific skills those students need. That's where we're really trying to think, every Falcon, every day, what does the But that's where we're really trying to think, every Falcon, every day, what does each kid need? So opportunities for intensified instruction, I talked about a few of these previously. You can kind of just see the breakdown of the ELA and math supports we have. Another thing that we added in was reading buddies with kindergarten and fourth grade, which are the two kids you can see on the screen, where fourth graders come down and they stay down until nine o'clock, kind of when that hustle and bustle of the school is going on. And they work with their kindergarten friends on beginning to learn skills. Here I just have my benchmark, which is really a starting point for us, because this is from the fall. From the very beginning of school year, we're currently undergoing a benchmark right now. So we're hoping with all of our interventions that we'll be able to see some positive results when we're benchmarking currently. So that's what we're seeing here. This is just to take a look at our students that are reading, meeting, approaching, and beginning reading levels. And then, since kindergarten doesn't have reading levels, I put in here for their letter ID, their letter sounds, and their number ID. So you can take a look and see the progress that they have made throughout the year. So I'm really happy with all the progress that our students, we had in the beginning of the year. Three kids in kindergarten knew their letters. Right now, 51, no. Okay? So our kids really come in needing to learn some of those basics. Letter sounds was zero. Taking a look at Panorama, that's that school climate survey that we give at the beginning and then second semester as well. And some areas of growth we found from our students reported. Emotional regulation was something that we could focus on, and also self-efficacy was another area. And I have there, you can see like what we were compared to Melville School District. And then Forter, last time we took it, last spring, what the difference was there. So some strengths that we had, student reported, was self-management. And we had went up in that area. Sense of belonging, 73%, that was really a pride point for us, that we had a high sense of belonging. And then teacher perception of student emotional regulation and student social awareness were also some strength. And those were above the school district averages, so we were excited about that. So as you might be able to tell, Forter is a big family. And that is really, really important. And if you've heard me talk over the past five years, that is just a big thing that's really important to us. So starting from the very beginning of the year, when we have our barbecue, as you can see kind of on the left, we do haircuts for families, we have a back-to-school barbecue where kids come and eat. We welcome kids with kindergarten signs. Kids are, kindergarten kids are learning how to ride the bus. We also do Start With Hello Week, if you can see who there came and joined us for Start With Hello Week this year. And then last but not least, just a little bit more about our fall festivals. We had a little winter fall party, a winter party, and just some fun things that happen around Forter and it's a special place that it is.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions? I got a quick one. When was that fall Panorama benchmark taken? Was that early in the fall or later?
It was, Adam, do you remember? September 7th.
Okay, so.
December 2nd, is that what you said?
September.
September 7th, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so still kind of near the beginning.
Beginning of the school year.
Okay. Do you feel like the supports you have, especially with the addition of ESER funds right now, are, are good for the challenges, especially after the last, what's now been two years?
Right, two years, yes. So, you know, actually, I was sitting in a committee meeting with teachers recently, and one of the staff members said, you know, we have more support than we have ever had. And really, being able to add in those additional interventionists and the district supporting us with reading teachers as well, has been an excellent support. So my challenge would be, how do we want to continue? And how can, you know, the board look at that to be able to hold on to those people and be able to continue that support? Because it's, it's been night and day difference.
Yeah, that makes sense. Maybe what we should do too is look at the data of where we were before and where we end up after this year and next year.
Right.
Try to see, put that case together from a data standpoint.
That's exactly what I'm thinking with iReady and everything. This is our bench, you know, this is where we're starting. So where can we go now that we have these supports? And what difference have they made? The SEL interventionist alone has been a fantastic support, just with all of the mental health that's been going on, even with the pandemic, you know, things have popped up that didn't before. And just being able to also have additional reading support. One of the interventionists that I chose to add with ESER was for upper grades. And that's something that we didn't have before at Forter. And it's, it's been a great support for the teachers and students.
That's great. Did you have something, Jean?
Yeah, of the 376 students total, you have 93 students in remedial reading. Are there any students that are not getting remedial reading that needed?
Right now, we've been fortunate to add a, a reading teacher last, like for this year, so we do have our students serviced.
I'm sorry, what did you?
We do have our students serviced right now, because we did add a reading teacher at Forter.
Okay, and of the, can, is there a specific method that the interventionists are using? Or is it based student by student?
You mean like a program type thing?
Yeah, like a teaching method.
Yes, so for the reading interventionist, they're utilizing a lot of guided reading and then strategy groups, depending on what specific skills the students need. My K-2 interventionist is really also looking at phonics and phonemic awareness, because a lot of our younger kids are missing those components. So they will use different assessments to figure out exactly where the kids are. And then also, the district purchased Literacy Footprints this year, which is a tool that teachers can use for guided reading. And, and it gives different, you can look by skill, by level. So if I know my kid is struggling with inferencing at a Level M, I can find some supports on how to help them come up at that level, at that skill. And it has been a fantastic addition of resources. So they utilize that in reading, reading interventionists and classroom teachers. And then in math, we've been utilizing iReady to target groups and determine who would qualify for groups. And looking at kids that are really on the bubble as well, of almost just getting it. And that's what we've been doing for math.
And when you, you are now doing tests, you're in the middle of benchmark testing.
Yes, we are, I think it closes at 27.
Could we get a number, number 13 slide, like you have presented tonight? Could, could we get one as soon as those figures are available?
Yes, definitely.
Which, if you could just send it to Kevin, and he can distribute it to the rest of us, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great, that's all I have, thank you.
Good.
I have a question. So I have a question. Math, you have 123 kids that need intensified instructional opportunities. What about, are they all being serviced? You only have one math?
That is, so she is not seeing them every day. So that's why she has more. She sees third, fourth, and fifth, and she's pushing into classrooms either two or three days a week. So she's able to see more kids in that way. And we're really focusing there on the bubble kids for math. And then the classroom teachers are providing the intervention for the students that are further below.
So there's no waitlist theoretically for interventions?
Those are actually, all those kids on that list are all kids that are actually participating in a group.
And first and second grade are addressed at the, by the teacher?
By the classroom teacher. And especially because the rigor of the math gets so much more intense at the upper grades, it's helpful to have an additional person there during the math time. So she actually pushes in during the math block.
And what happens if we have fourth and more specifically, fifth graders that are in the third tier red zone in terms of the multi-tiered system of support? I mean, and I, and I guess your, your explanation under tier three helps a little that you get special school district involved and get the SSD data team processes in place. But I'm just wondering, I mean, I just fear, I don't want to see a kid jump from fifth grade to sixth grade and be in the red zone.
Right, right, not being prepared. Yeah, you know, it can be tricky as, as you get up in your schooling, as you all know, it gets so much more complex and the rigor of the material really increases. And so that's one, we have never had the support that we have now in upper grades. You know, we, we always use the strategy, which is a good strategy of catch them while they're young. But then what do you do when kids move in, or kids don't get caught up when they're younger?
Right.
So this year is the first year that we were really able to service all of our students at those upper grades. So the structure that we use is every six weeks, we have a data team. That my, myself, the classroom teacher, or the teams, the classroom teams, and then the counselor and school psych go to. And we're using Panorama Student Success to track student interventions and meeting on a six-week basis. So we'll come up with the goal for the student, you know, and say that we want them to increase in this skill by doing this instructional strategy. And we're going to check in in six weeks and see if they've made progress or not, or if we need to talk about a different intervention. Maybe they do need a special education referral, you know? So trying different things and also hearing ideas from other people. We've, you know, we found some success in that. So that's been our, really our focus this year, is trying to make data-driven decisions and track our student progress, given enough time to make progress, but also checking in frequently. So all of our students that we know are performing in that red level, we have some type of intervention going for them that we're tracking and that we're meeting every six weeks to discuss the progress.
And is it your opinion in the last five years that we've just consistently changed too often? We haven't had enough consistency with our curriculum? And therefore, our teachers maybe are not, they're, they're just getting settled in and then things change? And then, I mean, at some point, should, where, how do we improve if we don't stick with the same? Does that, am I making?
Yeah, no, I totally get what you're saying. Yeah, and, and sometimes, I feel like sometime, yes and no, you know? So sometimes you pick something and you realize that it wasn't a good fit, you know? And, and you know you can do better. So I think there's that piece of it too. And there's new resources that can come about. So this is my ninth year out of the classroom. And when I was in the classroom, we really had no resource to support students with guided, or teachers instructing guided reading. So we would go to the book room and we would pick a book that was on that level. And we, as classroom teachers, and I worked with my team at Blaze, I can, writing lessons for each book, okay? It was very cumbersome, and we also weren't experts in that piece. So, and really finding the instruction to exactly hit where that kid needed. The piece like Literacy Footprints wasn't even available at that time. So I think now we know a little bit more, and each year you're learning more, and you're finding things that better fit. So I, as we do change and grow, you think we're trying to stay cognizant of making sure we don't make too many drastic changes?
Right.
Because there are even things at Forter that we know our students' vocabulary is an area of weakness that our students need some help with. So right now, we are looking at, how can we support our students with vocabulary? And that might not be an additional resource, but what instructional strategies can we use? So I think that you really have to look at your student data and with them ever changing. Sometimes so does the instructional strategy you're going to use. That makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All good?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, Beasley, Principal Dean.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting me here tonight to speak about Beasley Elementary. Home of the Jaguars and a very special place in my heart. So this is an overview of our current demographics. Even though Beasley still has the highest percentage of families in our district qualifying for free and reduced lunch, we're at 42%. Historically, our free and reduced lunch count has been much higher, usually around 60%. The drop is probably more an indicator of parents not completing the form, as Whitney had indicated, than really the, a reduction in the need for it. We have seen a slight increase in our English language learner students and a slight decrease in students with an individualized education plan. Our IEP population, though, is still above the state average, which is around 14%. The mission of Beasley is to provide a safe, caring, and collaborative school community where all are lifelong learners and citizens of character. Our building's school improvement goals are focused on growth in reading and math, multi-tiered systems of support, social-emotional learning, and community-parent-school partnerships. This is a little bit of quarter one reading level data. It's a baseline. It shows what our students were reading in October, what level they were reading at. Our teachers are currently completing report cards and marking the levels for quarter two. If you see the blue up there, those are students that were meeting grade level expectations in October. So we're kind of at that point in the year where we're gathering new data at this time. This is just one reading indicator. This is our iReady reading chart, and it shows an opportunity for growth. I do want to say there's different views that you can do, show when you show the iReady data. I'm not sure what view Whitney was using. This is our standard view, which means it compares students across all year long. Okay, because I'm like, it's going to look really different. Whitney used beginning of the year, so beginning of the year compares them to how they're prepared for the incoming grade level. This compares them to where they are on the standards for the grade level they're in currently. So like, if you look at first grade, 6% in the green of the students had their first grade skills at a, at first grade or above level. Where 89% were at a kindergarten or first grade level, and 4% were probably below that. So that kind of explains that, where if you look at a beginning-of-the-year view, it's a little bit different. So I use a different view than she did, because I want to be able to compare. And she has that same view, and she'll use that as well, but kind of what Jean was saying, to be able to compare fall to winter to spring, you need to use the standard view. So that's what I'm using here. And as I said, it shows an opportunity for growth. Our students move through their, as they move through the grade levels at Beasley, there are more and more students that master their grade level concepts. And you can see that, if you look at third, fourth, and fifth grades, the green area indicates those students, as I said, that are on or above grade level as they're incoming. And these are in their reading domains, as they're incoming into that grade. So the placement by domains also shows a strong universal foundation in phonemic awareness and sightword knowledge at Beasley. This is our iReady math. Again, it's our fall diagnostic. The students will begin taking the winter diagnostic on Monday. This again shows opportunity for growth. Our fifth grade shows the most students who were on or above grade level in math domains at the beginning of the year in September, which was promising. And our fifth grade classes have been able to move at a faster pace than expected due to this. First grade shows the most students who are within one year of being on the first grade level. So they were on a kindergarten or first grade level. These students have a good number sense to start first grade. So again, great opportunity for growth. Students will take the iReady diagnostic in reading and math starting next week. So we are looking forward to seeing how much progress they've made so far this year. If our current reading and math PDSA cycles, which is our Plan Due Study Act cycles, are correct, I'm going to wish that I was back here next month to share these, our tremendous growth of our students from September to now. This is our kindergarten growth, pre-reading skills with uppercase letters, lowercase letters, and sounds. If you see the BOY, that's the beginning of the year. So it's how many students knew that at the beginning of the year, how many at the end of term one. And then currently, we have 47 kindergarten students, and you can see where they're at currently. So they're learning and growing by leaps and bounds in kindergarten. Panorama, as Whitney said, we have so much Panorama data for our students and our staff. Many times, schools just focus on the students' well-being. And especially during this time, which we've been focusing so, so much on our teachers and what we're going through as we're teaching students, I wanted to highlight a few of our staff positives from Beasley. As you can see, our teachers are reflective. They have knowledge about educating all students and learning, and have been learning more about cultural awareness. Beasley scores are positive when compared to Melville School District, as well as Beasley's previous score. So you can see the plus is compared to Melville, and then the change since last year's survey. This indicates the strength of Beasley's collective teacher efficacy and the clarity in which our teachers know what they are teaching. And they believe that all students can learn. Collective teacher efficacy is a collective belief of teachers and their ability to positively affect students. Beasley staff share that belief through our collective action, and we positively influence student outcomes. We have a positive school, sorry, school climate, a strong sense of belonging, and a focus on professional growth and opportunities for all staff, students, and families. Our greatest strength identified through the Panorama survey was our professional learning about social-emotional learning. Beasley has a strong commitment to multi-tiered systems of support. I do want to mention that our greatest opportunity Beasley has a long history of social-emotional learning supports for students, including Zones of Regulation. We were one of the first schools, first elementary schools to start using Zones universally. We have a trauma-informed staff, and we partner with Homeworks for home visits and parent workshops. Students are participating in after-school clubs and tutoring on a regular basis, increasing our staff and student connections and fostering a sense of belonging. Our focus has been on tier one universals for all, all students. Our interventions, interventionists are pushing into classrooms, co-teaching, and providing core instruction alongside our classroom teachers. We don't want to pull students from our classrooms where their peer and teacher influence and opportunity for engagement is the strongest. We want the supports embedded into their daily environment. So that's what this chart right here shows. It shows the support across all the grade levels, and I want you to know that our classroom reading interventionists, one of the things we're doing is that they're only working in specific areas with mul, with not, many grade levels, specific grade levels. So we're really trying to be strategic with that. So like when it says math interventionists, I actually have two math interventionists. One works with second and third grade, one works with fourth and fifth grade, so very specialized, and that has really helped with our collaboration. It's also helped with our planning, knowing the curriculum, knowing the content. In a school with many needs and students full of excitement and opportunity, one strength is the small student-to-teacher ratio. Whether we saw it when we were in the blended model, having our smaller class sizes, or we're lucky enough that Beasley's a small school, and our district has been committed to providing those smaller class sizes and allowing more teachers to be able to work with students. With our interventionists, we really have increased our teacher-to-student ratio. And so we've been able to give students feedback, feedback that is specific, it's timely, it's frequent, and it's constructive. Students are letting us know how, that they are not as frustrated because they are receiving individualized support every day. And as our motto states, "The Beasley community is always working together for every child, every day." Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. How many students are currently being served by interventionists of your 302 students?
Okay, so the 302 includes early childhood, and the early child would, childhood students would not be included in that, so it's the 288. And serviced by interventionist currently, it would be all students. So it's a little bit different. It's a little bit different because we've had a lot of experience with pulling kids out and doing small group type interventions and things like that. And what we decided as a staff, our data was showing us that our kids needed to stay in the classroom.
I so agree with that. I'm so glad to hear that.
They, it, it's really important, so what happens is, it's very flexible, it's very fluid. So the staff meets and they are talking on a regular basis. So I'll give you an example, because my fifth grade teachers are here. So Erica Faust is our math interventionist. She works with Amanda Barton, who's here as our fifth grade teacher, and they're constantly collaborating and meeting. She only works with two teachers. She works with a fourth grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher, Erica does. They constantly, every day at the end of the lesson, they're talking about, okay, tomorrow, this kid was still struggling, so we're meeting with this kid. And today, this, you know, so it's not, it's not ju, it's not just a small group that they're pulling. I do have some tutoring groups that are being small group pulled at different times, but it's, that's different and strategic. Our interventionists are not really doing that.
We heard about the data team that meets every, or reports every six weeks at Fordor. Do you have anything like that at Beasley?
Yes. So we are also data teaming. We data team and meet in grade level teams weekly, but then our tier one and tier two and tier three teams meet monthly.
Monthly, okay.
Yes. Other questions?
I think I'll jump in here. I actually would like to ask if you could send that iReady next month, because that would be really interesting to see. It's, it's unfortunate that because of how these are spaced out, they don't always work out the best for being able to showcase things the best.
Absolutely. So it'll be, I believe we end on like February 17th, something like that.
Okay, great.
Or the following week, so.
That works.
Okay. Love to send it.
Couple of notes, a couple of questions. Panorama, that's pretty impressive. I don't know if it's because you guys have got those challenges, that people just put their head down and attack things, and that's why they're, they're where they're at, but it's, it's just impressive to see that, so just a comment. You brought up parent workshops, and I'm curious about what that is.
So every grade level has a parent workshop in the fall and a parent workshop in the spring. The grade level team chooses what academic area they're going to focus on, math or reading or a certain area of that example, first grade focused on addition facts in the fall. And then they invite the parents and students, I say it's a parent workshop, but we've kind of turned it into a parent-student workshop. So the parents and the students come in in the evening and they work with the, the teachers in presenting that. So it starts out, we go over some data. Each parent gets a folder with their child's data. We talk about different things, attendance, we talk about iReady data, we talk about things like that very quickly, that they get a quick snapshot of their child. And then we go into how can they help their child with whatever the skill is. So actually, sitting down, they play all the games, all the learning that their kids are learning in school, they sit down and do that with their child that night, with the teacher they're helping and supporting. Fourth grade did multiplication, and they were talking, you know, about how to use the area model and things like that. Parents need help knowing how to teach their children in the ways that they're being taught at school. So it's hands-on. Every student that comes and every parent that comes gets a bag, a bag of materials that has everything they need for that night. So like third grade was doing, they were doing beginning multiplication and they start with arrays. They had a, what's called a rec and recs that they made for every family. And so they take that home, it looks just like the rec and recs in their classroom. They take it home, they have that material. If they have a game that needs dice, they have dice in there. If they need a whiteboarder marker, there's a whiteboarder marker in there. So it's a really good family-parent-school connection.
That is really neat what you're doing there. It reminds me of a, an article I read about the top three turnaround stories for schools in the nation. This was, I think it was like four years ago, I read this, and Newark, I believe, was one of them. And they pursued something that was kind of similar to that and kind of credited that for really helping their students because the parents were involved so much more and knew what was happening with kids. Because I agree with you, it's, my kids did so many things where I was clueless about what they were doing.
Right. We assume that the parents are, know how to help them with that, and they're like, I don't know what that, I don't even know what that model looks like or what it is.
Yeah, I had to start reading my daughter's science book before I could help her with something, so.
I think everybody last year got a good taste of that with kids at home.
Yeah.
Realizing there's an immense amount of work going on in the classroom.
Right, and you can ask questions. I mean, the teacher's there, helping you one-on-one. So like, in fourth grade, when we had it, our math interventionist was there, our teachers were there. So they're helping, they're there helping the parents, and the parents can ask questions right during the workshop.
Yeah.
It's great that you're doing that because, you know, kids come home with work and we're scratching our heads because we may not have been in school for quite some time, some of us older than, more than others, but i, it's a good way to get a view of what you're doing to get the kids instructed and helping us help continue that at home. So any way to do it in a different manner or get the parents involved, A-plus, go for it.
Many of, many of our grade levels will provide dinner or their snacks, things like that, which has been difficult. We've had us spread out a lot with COVID, but sometimes it's right after, you know, parents are getting off work, so we're able to do those types of things as well.
I've got one last one, and I, I really kind of want to focus on this one. And it goes both between Beasley and Fordor and a few other schools, where I think we've struggled a bit maybe with trying to make sure that we had the resources in place to help our students get to where, you know, they need to be all of those levels. Always tell people that, you know, the ultimate school system would be, we have one teacher for every child, and then they focus on getting that kid to where they need to be, but we don't live in that world where we can do that. So it's always this resources versus budgets and that sort of a thing, but it really seems like there's an opportunity from what you said and what Dr. Moss said about, we've got these extra resources right now in your schools. How do we make sure that we actually, that we can track and we can see from a data perspective the amount of improvement that you can make in one year, knowing that you're starting behind and knowing that these resources are slated to go away in, is it three years?
Three years.
You know, if, if this really shows to be the way to get to where we want our schools to be, because we want to be a destination district, top-notch school district for every kid coming here, how do we make sure that we utilize this opportunity, if you will, under bad circumstances? But, you know, maybe this is the opportunity going forward to really show that this is the way to really improve things for all of our kids. So I guess I just kind of, my focus on that is just to kind of stress that, that I just think that needs to be something we're all thinking about as we kind of go through this time period. Not just did we make it through, but what do we learn and what do we take going forward with it? And do we, as a district, make the decision that those resources go away in three years? Or do we figure out a way to keep them in certain places where they're that important?
Absolutely. And that's one of the things we focused on at Beasley, was the staff is where we're seeing the, the biggest difference. And so in kindergarten and first grade, I was able to use Title I funds and hire a paraprofessional who's also similar, doing similar work, it's only part-time, but doing similar work like our interventionists, because I wanted to have that early intervention, and I had focused on some other things with the interventionist money. So I was able, I, I have a lot of support in all of the grade levels, and I have multiple teachers in every classroom for the reading block and the math block and the writing block, even if I can't provide it for all the blocks of time. So it's definitely something, I mean, Dr. Moss and I talk a lot, we partner a lot, the title schools definitely have some challenges and opportunities that maybe other schools aren't always dealing with. Every school has, has them, but we definitely have students who, and families who need more support.
Yep. Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else, so?
So I have the same thoughts as Kevin, as we have to do everything we can, Marshall, to keep these extra interventionists and specialists. And I'm going to also assume, given the circumstances of the pandemic, a lot of times our specialists and interventionists are actually probably subbing to some degree, which is even a, will be a deficit.
Absolutely.
To date on data, because.
I just had this conversation with Jennifer Hansen yesterday. And it's, it's one of those, it's a balancing act, you're trying to leverage your staff. And I created a schedule today that was a little crazy. My staff went with it because I was trying to keep my interventionists in the classroom and have people cover some classes, and my counselor covered, I covered, my SCL interventionist was covering. She said that I was a saint for teaching kindergarten for 15 years, after she was in kindergarten, but it is, that's been a, a big challenge is that we don't have substitutes right now.
Right.
I mean, we have very limited substitutes. So we are using our interventionist as subs. As a Title I school, we cannot use our Title I reading specialist as subs, so we're not doing that, but our district-paid interventionists, we are.
Yeah, and so, I mean, in my opinion, your numbers for the next benchmark would even be more improved if we didn't have the sub problem, more likely than not hypothetically.
Right. Well, you just can't provide that consistency right now.
Right. And do you have any waitlists in your school for?
So I don't have any waitlist, and by that, I mean, every student's being served by someone. It might not be, so they may qualify for a reading specialist, and my fourth and fifth graders may not be working with the reading specialist right now, so like in a title program. So instead, they're working with either, I have a fully certified reading specialist who's a tutor, I'm very lucky in that respect, so she's actually doing some reading groups. She is a reading specialist, she's just not one of my Title I reading specialists. I also have a fifth grade group who's actually meeting with my language arts interventionist on a daily basis, so they are being serviced, so there's not really a waitlist, but they're not meeting with my reading specialist. I have eight students that we qualify to meet with the reading specialist that are meeting with others, you know, interventionists and specialists in the building.
Okay, great. And lastly, I also think you should brag on your, I don't know how, what, how much your Homeworks has been able to go into the home given COVID, but you should brag on that too, because.
We've been doing it, that's for sure. All fall, we did.
Okay. So you might want to explain, because I know Patrick and probably Jeff is, have you ever heard about Homeworks? Do you know what that is?
I have no clue.
Okay. See, and I've talked about it so much the other years, I didn't talk a lot about it this year, but.
I mean, I've seen it, I've seen it discussed, but it's probably been quite a while since I've actually had it, so a refresher would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, so we work with a community partner, nonprofit partner called Homeworks, and they provide our staff opportunities to be able to go and do home visits, so we actually do training with our staff. They support our staff with materials, so like the bags and all the materials that are in the bags are come from, through our Homeworks program. Our district also supports, some of the money is reimbursable, some of the money the district actually pays for, for this program. But, so we're going on home visits in the home, meeting with the students and the parents. I go on home visits as well. We do a big family dinner, Peggy's been there serving before, at the beginning of the year. So it's not the first day like Whitney's family dinner, it's a few weeks in, usually it's in September. All of our families come in, and it's just a fun welcome-type dinner. And then we've signed parents up for home visits at that time, and we tell them all about Homeworks. And then Homeworks also provides the bags and the support and the training for all of our parent workshops. So they, that's part of what they do. So they provide $5 a bag for every single student, they provide $2 for snacks or drinks or things like that, so that community partner. We, I have monthly meetings with our Homeworks representative. I have two Homeworks site coordinators in my building who run the program, Suzie Burtley and Ben McCloskey. So it is, it is a great program. We're in our fourth year, and schools only stay in for five years. So we are in the planning stage to try to figure out how we take it over as a Beasley community and how we keep things going that are working well, because there's things that we don't want to stop doing, but the funding won't be there after the fifth year.
Yeah, and it's so important to remember, especially in Beasley and Fordor with the higher ratio of free and reduced lunch, that a lot of these parents need support themselves to even know how to support their child, like you said, with the workshops, and then Homeworks helps that. But oftentimes, they're struggling, working two or three jobs, and the last thing they have time for is really to help their children at night, you know, because they might be at work.
And sometimes there's a, depending on how school was for them, it might be hard for them to get up to school, or it might be something that's difficult for them, a stigma of they're like, you know, school was tough for me, so it's hard to go meet with the teacher. So we go to their home, and we'll meet them at a park, we'll meet them at McDonald's, we'll meet them at their house, we'll meet them at the library, anywhere that's kind of away from Beasley. The whole idea is that we're going on, into their turf and where they are. And it's 30 minutes we spend there. I will tell you, both of the ones I went on went longer than 30 minutes, because the parents and kids want to show you things. I went in the backyard, they had to show the dogs and the chickens, and, you know, we're just going, doing all kinds of things after we did kind of the academic part that we do on the home visit. So it's a really, it's a big connection piece as well, getting to know your families. And I, I don't know if the Shavers are still here, no, the Shavers are a family that's had a home visit every single year, so, when Josh, and so you see that great partnership.
Yeah, it sounds like something that definitely you need to keep going. So I mean, if there's ways we can help with that, please reach out.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to governance, starting with health services data. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. My pleasure to give our annual report, district health services report. So this slide just indicates who is serving and what our staffings look like over a period of time from 2016 to current in our schools. So right now, we have 22 full-time nurses and two part-time LPNs that support school health rooms, and we have four.
And I, I don't know if the Shavers are still here now, the Shavers are family that's had a home visit every single year, so, when Josh, and so you see that great partnership.
Yeah, it sounds like something that definitely you need to keep going. So, I mean, if there's ways we can help with that, please reach out.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to governance, starting with health services data. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. My pleasure to give our annual report, District Health Services Report. So this slide just indicates who is serving and what our staffings look like over a period of time from 2016 to current in our schools. So right now, we have 22 full-time nurses and two part-time LPNs that support school health rooms, and we have four health room assistants. I want to clarify on this slide, first semester, in some of those years, that actually meant August to December. Last two years, that did not mean that. So when we're looking at this and the title says first semester, I want to just clarify, that means August, first day of school for student attendance in August, the last day in December for 2017 through 2022. And you can definitely see last year being connected and blended and then in person, just the very significant dip in visits and just the health room visits that happened in 2021, and then also our uptick for where things look like this year. If we look at just this current school year from August until December, we have had a total visit count of 60,397 visits to our school health rooms in pre-K through 12. That is pretty significant. If you look at having school for about 80 days since August to December, that would average just about 755 visits throughout our system a day. And so when I talked to Nurse Ahern, just to get a little bit more detail on that, she said both of our high schools average 100-plus visits a day, our middle schools are averaging between 60 and 90-plus visits a day, and our elementary schools average upwards of 70 visits a day to their health rooms during the seven-and-a-half-hour school day. Also in our data that gets reported when, when parents do a new enrollment or they do a family update, we currently have 7,800 families in our school district that have indicated that they have some sort of health insurance. You look at our prevalent student conditions, and these again are reported whether it be for an existing family during that family update session that happens in summer, early fall, or for new student enrollment. These are health concerns and conditions that parents are reporting that their students are experiencing that have a medical diagnosis. One thing I would like to point out, in comparison to last year, our life-threatening allergies had an increase of 212 students that had, have a life-threatening allergy over last year, which indicates a total of 356 students pre-K through 12 that have a condition that would fall in that category. Also, not surprising, based on, you know, the current reality of our times, our students with anxiety have increased by 96 compared to last year, totaling 584 students across our district that have a medical diagnosis of anxiety. Asthma is always a big, a big number, and that's, that's very typical on our ADDHD number is, is very typical in the scheme of historical data. One thing I would like to point out and really give a shout out and a lot of thanks to, you know, Dr. De Kemper, central office team, central office assistants, the facilities team, Jessica Pillow and her team, as well as community partnerships. We did a lot of providing access to both employees as well as families in the course of, of the last year. And so during that time, we have 815 of our employees and special school district employees that, that work in our, in our schools and support our students and community, were able to get flu vaccines through our partnership with Walgreens. During those weekend times where Chad and Jeff came in early and facilities crew came in early to get things set up, we, we had 1,158 COVID vaccinations that were given. And then also, we had 204 adult boosters that were also given on that 12-4 date, which I think is awesome. And then just since we've been back from winter break, Nurse Ahern and, and a few sites that we've kind of distributed throughout the district, with some of the tests that we were able to acquire from the state, we have given approximately 250 COVID tests to staff members returning from break. I would like to point out something very exciting, it's kind of happened really recently behind the scenes, is we have partnered with a vendor called Grapefruit, and they are going to offer no-cost COVID testing for our students and for our staff, and this will be starting on Monday, the 24th, so next Monday. This testing site that we have worked on is going to operate out of 2900 LeMay, and it's going to operate on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. And then our intention with this is to provide easy access to testing for our students and staff, and we're keeping that restricted to our students and staff at this time. Grapefruit has capacity through their supply chain to provide both rapid antigen and our test to those, those two groups. So we're really excited that that's, was something we were able to get established in the last few days, and, and that's going to be up and running. We'll have some information going out to staff and the community probably tomorrow with just some information and some, some marketing around that. So I'm excited that that was able to happen. Just looking at the professional learning plan this year, Jen and her team has spent a lot of time on their CPR recertifications. There's parts that they have to do in person, there's also parts that the nurses have to do online for part of that coursework. Also, we had Hazel Health rollout, which is part of, we did have that in the strategic plan as a beginning rollout to support physical health for students. And so some of our elementary schools, Beasley, Bearbaum-Forter, Troutwine, and then all of our secondary schools are piloting that right now. Rollouts been a little, little slow, we have about, a little under 200 families that have taken advantage of it and actually signed up to access. I think part of that's just due to the pandemic. One thing that they recently, as of two days ago, that they released is that they are waiving the copayment for anyone who's enrolled and partnering with Hazel Health for the rest of the school year. So we're going to get that information out, and that might be something that makes it a little bit more enticing, have access to that physical health through the school, those particular buildings. Also, they do a lot of work with the School Suburban Nurse Association. Nurse Ahern is very involved in, in all the regional aspects of what's happening in the county, COVID responses, things of that nature, and just applying those, you know, ongoing supports to make sure that we, we have the latest and greatest in what we're doing to support health services in the district. I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the entire health team. They've, they've been through a lot, they, they volunteer at clinics, they stay late for activities, they, they come in early, they, they stay late to input data, especially on the tests that have to be submitted to the state for any of the testing that we're doing. So they're just a great team, and they've worked really countless hours in some uncertain times and in probably unprime conditions and, and situations. And so really proud of the work that they do continually to support the students and the staff in our school district. And so with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
I've got one. Do we do any COVID testing inside of our school buildings? Or would it all be through outside organizations?
So right now, the only one we would do in a school is what we had through the state that they've been for staff only. So with Grapefruit starting Monday, that will be, students can access that.
Okay, but that's through that?
But it's through that, and it's at 2900. So it's not being done particularly like within a health, a health room in the school building, yes.
Yeah. So is that something where a parent has to be involved too, to say that they want their kid to be back, or to be checked?
Yes, so parents have to give consent, since all those students need minors and have to be present in order to, yes.
Okay. So we don't test any kids without parental consent, and we don't do it on school premises? It would be done offsite by professionals? And the only testing that's ever been done onsite is potentially staff?
Staff only, yes.
Who are able to make their own decision about doing it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What about the students that are 18? Do they have the ability to do that if they want, without parental consent?
Yeah, if they're of age, yeah.
I'll just make one quick statement about the vaccine clinic. I went to both just to be there, to see what it was like, and it was so nice to see. Dr. Wang was one of our Melville High School Hall of Famers. He runs after med shop, he helps out with that. But it was also nice to see some of our school nurses participate, obviously. I was a kid, I hated getting any sort of shot, it was always a super nervous experience. But if you have a nurse who's been there before and like you're familiar with that person, that could help, obviously, it just helps. So it was nice to see our staff there. Obviously, they volunteered their time on a Saturday to come in and just be with the kids so they could feel safe and protected, and it was nice to see all the community come out. So that was, again, really nice to see. I saw our head nurse Ahern at the second one, and it was just great to, nice to see everyone there, there was a lot of community. I just thought it was great, so I agree.
My kids actually went to both the vaccine clinics, they thought it was great. You know, they, that having their own nurse give them the vaccine shot was just, again, an extra little bonus, but they were, they thought it was great. They had no questions about it, you know, anything they were worried about, they were good. So, I mean, from a parental perspective, I thought it went fantastically.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to give a shout out to, as you said, all of our healthcare professionals in our district, because, you know, obviously, besides the visits, they have all the phone calls, and then they get the great job of breaking the news to parents that they have to pick up their kids, and then they have upset parents because they can't work. And, I mean, it's just a, it's a tough job, and we appreciate everybody that does it. And they look overworked by your, by your graph.
Yeah, it's kind of staggering when you see the numbers that we serve, just like the lunches we serve, we serve a lot of kids with, with health needs and support those throughout the day, so definitely, they're a great team.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, budget development, right?
All right, here we are, budget time, fiscal year '23. So the schedules that you're going to see, they're all related to the debt expense. If you think about the financial statements, bottom, near the bottom of the expense page of the financial statements, that's where we have principal and interest. And so as you look through the schedules, self-explanatory pretty much, every year is going to be right around $2.5 million between the principal and interest, it's based on the Prop S general obligation test. So that's, you know, pretty easy, that'd be 12 cents roughly, we collect it, we then pay it, what we did on Prop S. So those are the schedules. But I think in terms of context, what, what's it mean, you know, relatively speaking, to the overall budget and to the district? You know, when, also, when you think about the financial statements, on about the last page is the finance dashboard. And we talk about this periodically, on the finance dashboard, there's about six benchmarks. One of them is debt per student, one of them is operating expense per student. Those are good benchmarks, we'll talk about that. So our debt per student, if you look on the current financial statements that are in consent tonight, if you look on that dashboard, the debt per student, basically investing in our infrastructure, all the things that Prop S is doing, we're 20th out of 20 because two school districts have not reported, so of the 20 reporting school districts, we're dead last. And on the, and so what have we done for that? We've attempted to work with Prop S to inject some funds into infrastructure. When you look at the other side of the coin of operating expenses on that benchmark, we're 21st out of 22nd. Jennings is just ahead of us, and Riverview Gardens is below us. So we're 21st out of 22nd. So, you know, we're the end, the bottom on, on both sides. The general, the operating expense per student, that's, that's our educational programs, our daily spending. So, you know, we have a need for infrastructure money, we have a need for operating expense money, so as we work through the budget season, you'll hear, you know, more updates on what we're budgeting, what we're doing. But I'll be talking with the finance committee and probably talking with you guys further on future budget presentations about, most likely, we will have to alter the plan of that copreallocation plan where we were initially going to put most of that towards capital projects, or not, over time, we're going to put a chunk towards capital projects and over time, inject a million dollars every year into operating funds. We simply don't have that choice. We're going to have to take a chunk of that upfront and put that into operations. We've injected money into infrastructure with Prop S, we need to inject money into operations. We cannot go with $4 million operating deficits. So there'll be more discussion on that, fine tuning, but just, you know, this being a budget kickoff, you know, just so you know upfront, that's sort of the direction that I'm, I'm going to be heading. But we'll talk about that a lot in the finance committee meeting coming. That's all I've got for now, are there any questions?
All right, thanks, Marshall. Facility bids.
Not have any facility bids at this time?
No. So strategic plan?
All right, our strategic plan update. The five themes that you see in front of you, I hope, look familiar, student preparation, safety, access and opportunity, workforce support, and then also effective and efficient. Tonight, we're going to give you an update on number five. Effective and efficient speaks more to the process of the first four, speaks more to the how we get things done through our strategic plan. As you know or have been exposed to in recent months, we've had board presentations on each one of these, tonight being obviously effective and efficient. We're going to continue to share progress with you and updates as we move forward on each theme. Dr. Smith, Dr. De Kemper, Ms. Hansen, Mr. Smith have been instrumental in ensuring that these reports are given out to you, so we want to continue that this coming months. So strategies that I'll talk about this evening more in depth. The eight are ensuring a balanced budget, as Marshall alluded to, with appropriate cash reserves. Number two, alignment, that district strategic plan to building level improvement plans. And then also, following to the classroom practices that you've heard tonight from Beasley as well as Forter, how we align, away from our district plan down to the individual classroom level. Cyclical, number three, cyclical investments in infrastructure, ongoing stakeholder engagement, our Baldridge Criteria for Performance Excellence, our continued focus on that, as well as our extension of the five-year capital plan, identification of practices that can be refined or discontinued, and then following the establishment of processes for schools to help develop those themes for advanced innovation. You've seen this before, when you think of a district of our size, 19 school, 19 school sites, roughly about 10,000, 10,200 students with approximately about, I think 18, I think I saw today, 1,800, 1,820 employees. It often feels like we're moving in different paths, working in different directions, but that's what our strategic plan is meant for, is to provide direction and build that momentum. And we have our forces that I mentioned all working together, that is what allows us to build that momentum that you'll see tonight in some of these examples. So balanced budget, cash reserves. Our goal of a balanced budget with appropriate cash reserves does not come, obviously accidentally, does not come, doesn't just happen, it has to be intentional. Thank you to Mr. Kretschl, Kretschler for making that a priority. He is, Marshall's done a great job in helping us meet this goal. Here's some of the examples that we're using to work to meet that, those budget goals. Continued board updates, oversight of long-term projects, as you've been hearing through these recent months, transparent monthly reporting on Prop S, which Dr. Gaines will give shortly. Also engagement and oversight by our financial committee, our finance committee. And then active participation in state, county, and federal grant opportunities. I'll use the COVID pandemic on a positive from there. That's a, that's an example of how we strategically use our ESSR funds to address some of those interventionists, the learning loss, as well as some capital projects. I'll use, Mr. Smith didn't really boast himself enough, but he was very instrumental in, in being able to secure Grapefruit, that, that ability for us to do testing for all staff and students. That's allowed us to prevent, to, to add those additional things into our practices. Here's another, obviously, you've seen this last month, I'm hinting from our auditors, is this another example of the showcase of that work that's being done by our financial team? Alignment. So this strategy, the creation of our strategic plan should be reflected in our building level improvement plans. So this strategy, um, the creation of our strategic plan, um, should be reflected in our building level improvement plans that we do at each building, um, as well as what you'd see in classrooms. So I'll talk a little bit about this. This year, we've done monthly learning walks, um, and principal touchpoints in the buildings. The first two months, I'll use as an example of the year, the first, um, month was intentionally looking at the use of interventionists in each building, all schools. So our two high schools, our four middle schools and our 11 elementary schools, that was the, the target that us as a team went through with our building principals and supported them and went through and made sure that we were looking for that intentionality of those interventionists you were referring to. The second month, um, from my, um, memory, we, we talked and, and looked at the evidence of what those interventionists were doing, um, and how that was evidenced in the classrooms that we were observing. So through those learning walks, we're able to check and have constant, um, checks of, of, of progress as well as practices being used. This is an example, um, I believe it was last month, uh, we sat in principal roundtables. Held them three times, um, a year. It's been something that we started last year. And as you see, we have a building principal as well as other team members. Those other team members are team members from our teaching and learning department. Work together to plan, reflect on accountability, how they're doing, um, on their goals. And that took place last month. Also, we allow principals, directors to share best practices. For example, our all-hands meetings, uh, Dr. Gaines has, um, the, allows every department share out, uh, best practices, things that they're doing for the purpose of other departments monitoring, as well as maybe ensuring that they use, um, or pick up some of those things that can be replicated. Instructional leadership team meetings we have with our, um, our elementary principals as a group, our secondary principals as a group. We also include our content area experts in those conversations. Also seen recently, we've seen a lot of, um, visits. Our high school's been visiting our middle schools to look at their academies. Seen our high school's actually over at Mosaic. So we're seeing examples of how they're expanding those practices in each setting. Cyclical investments. So if you've lived through Melville School District long enough, as I have, um, we've had a lot of challenges we've been faced before. You know that our infrastructure historically addressed patterns, um, of problems when needs occurred. So once needs, um, occurred, or we were in a situation where we had to fix something or had issues with problems that we needed to fix, uh, what do we do? We looked at things and, um, historically, we didn't have the infrastructure that we do now. So these cyclical investments that we're making are allowing us to be more proactive and prepared. For example, I'll use about our, I hate to keep using the pandemic as, as a example, but I thought about the fact that we went to virtual last year, um, with not a lot of notice. If we were not investing in technology, we wouldn't have been one-to-one when that pandemic started. We, we were investing in technology as time went through so that we were not prepared for the pandemic. But that's just an example. When something does happen, a crisis occurs with having these ongoing cyclical investments help us. Example I'll have up here, uh, with our buses. We know the life expectancy of our buses, we know it's going to cost additional money to maintain them. And then to negate the cost of the unnecessary repairs, we've been able to, um, sell off our old buses as we're purchasing new ones. Very well aware of that as, um, transportation department, as well as, uh, Marshall has shown you through the previous months. So these are just, uh, examples. This obviously is one of those examples, a snapshot that should be familiar to all of you. It's considered to be our playbook. You know, we look at our investment, not just for our current needs and what we're doing next year, but future plans in order to, uh, meet the results of the, of our strategic plan that we have put together. Stakeholder engagement. We've seen stakeholder engagement through different methods. Recognition, like you saw tonight with students, uh, families, taxpayers, voices, um, ongoing conversations, phone calls, emails in person, as well as virtual. Um, I'll reference back to October, you were presented with our communications plan. So, um, this Papilio demonstrated at that board meeting, all of the updates to our communication plan based on what? It's been based on our, our surveys that we've done, based on, uh, thought exchange. You know, these parent group meetings, board listening sessions. Dr. Gaines meets with our PTO presidents, uh, for parent council meetings, things like that. So those are all examples of stakeholder engagement that have been purposeful and intentional. Mr. Smith, uh, also is, um, very key to the creation of Panorama for us in Melville School District. As you heard from our schools tonight, Fordham, Beasley, um, they've had that ability to get feedback from students and from staff through Panorama. That's another example of how we get engagement, how we get stakeholder voice. Within recent years, uh, we've seen historic ballot success, right, through Prop R, through Prop S. Those successes obviously are a product, um, they can be linked, if you think about it, to the examples of that stakeholder engagement. The more we engage our stakeholders and, and had a conversation with them and got feedback from them, you've seen that recent success through those two propositions that we had not had the ability to be successful in the past. Criteria for performance excellent, excellent, sorry. You may have heard us refer to the plate, you know, the plate of education. I don't have a visual up there, it's not for some reason, but, uh, that criteria for performance excellence. Those are all examples of, um, how we use, um, a structure or a framework for how we make decisions. The other things, I'm going to go back maybe. This here, so we're towards the end with the extension of our five-year capital plan. We've done careful monitoring of Prop R, Prop S, A, um, ESSER funding for capital plan possibilities. Those are the big rocks, um, we have, include our HVAC, our windows, our roofing, asphalt, furniture, drainage, elevator modernization, things like that. And then also continued, uh, analysis of energy and resources. Essentially taking practices, um, and determining whether or not we should continue those practices, whether we should stop doing those practices. Are we putting time into things, um, that are no longer useful for our organization? So reexamining those possibilities, reexamining, um, our processes have obviously been successful for us. And then also I'll use some examples of, uh, some advancing, um, innovation in our schools. The academic pipeline, you think of Mosaic, middle school academies at the four middle schools. And then MyPath, another example at our two high schools, um, our catalyst for innovation. They're also expanding opportunities on our high schools, the Melville High School is looking at the Monster Block, Oakville High School, um, the academy expansion, as well as including, if I said Melville at home, another purposeful way of increasing opportunities. And you think of these things, these are all opportunities that our families would have traditionally possibly have gotten outside of Melville, outside of our school. So those are some examples of how we are working to be more effective and efficient. Obviously, this is just a, um, brief overview of how we are monitoring our progress. And as I said, that is the number five, that's essentially, it's the how we're making each one of those things work. And you saw examples tonight firsthand from listening to our two schools. So next month, February, I believe is safety, we'll be, um, doing another presentation on safety, coming back to that, um, at our February board. Any questions?
Everyone good?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I have a statement that doesn't probably need to be said, but I'm going to say it out loud anyway. I was going to say it during Marshall's budget presentation, but as we know, especially from tonight's presentations from both of our schools, that ESSER funding is so, so, so important for these specialists and these interventionists. And we need to figure out a way to keep that staff on board and if, and add to it if we could.
There's not a day that, that goes by that we don't reference, um,
Right.
that, that resource that we've been given. But how do we sustain that once that resource?
And I know, like I said, I know it doesn't need to be said in this room because everybody has the same sentiments, but I think we need to acknowledge that we have to figure out a way to do that.
I really think what you said, the how, and what you're saying of figuring it out. And if we combine that with looking at the data, does this make that big of a difference? We learned in Prop R that if we go to our community with the situation where we're at, what we want to do to improve it, and if we bring data that shows that, and we keep those costs in line with, you know, what would be expected for cost benefit, and it's not wasteful that our community turns out 70, 80% in favor of these things, still 72% in favor of a tax increase at that point. So I think it really does come down to, let's really look at it from what you're saying here of, how do we know, now that we've got this opportunity, how do we figure out exactly what the impact is? And then if it's something that's going to put our schools into another spot, which it very well might. I mean, we know what reading interventionists did in 2016. So, you know, this might be another spot where our community would get behind us and push this forward. But we gotta come with everything I said, it's gotta be worth, you know, we're, we're a town of fiscal conservatives, which I'm one too. It's, we need to come at it from the aspect of, it's gotta be worth it, there can't be waste, and there needs to be an impact, a positive impact.
Here they're from our teachers as well. So interventions are helping kids, um, they're also, it's another resource that our teachers, um, rely on now as well, so.
I'll add to that really quick. I just, uh, obviously as we all know, COVID's not just impacting students, it infects staff. So you've seen news around, let's say in our, our St. Louis County, St. Louis city bubble, as well as southwest Missouri of schools having to close. Even though we're only permitted the 36 hours, I believe, of virtual instruction this year, having that support staff there that know the students already and can step into a classroom on top of the substitutes we have is extremely helpful for sustaining our workforce during a difficult time. Obviously to do so with new staff positive. So obviously our interventionist and our support staff have helped out a ton with that, which is obviously, you know, ESSER funds are partial, and they came out of COVID, but then obviously they're helping us sustain during this still difficult time. So appreciate them for that, and it's just helpful to have them around right now.
Right?
Anything else?
Prop S update?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Heard Prop S mentioned a number of times tonight. Been giving some updates along the way, every, pretty much every meeting. Some of those have been a little bit more detailed, some of them have been a little bit less. And that is partly because, maybe you could describe this whole process of moving from passing a ballot to construction project after construction project after construction project is a bit of a roller coaster. So after Prop S was passed, we had a couple of projects that were ready to go. We jumped on those, those are completed. In the background, we've been doing all of this planning work. And we're getting ready to bid a bunch of jobs. While we're in the midst of bidding those jobs, we're planning the next jobs. So what is visible to people is, is going to kind of come in waves here at first until we really get things kicking. So that next wave of things is going to include, um, the OES parking lot. Heard it, we've talked in the past that there were some plot issues that we had to deal with around the existing Oakville Elementary site being owned by four entities. Cleared that through the courts this week, so that part is done. There were concerns over the tax status of the parcel. We got that figured out this afternoon, so that's all done. So we will be able to move forward, building permits and all of that stuff, because bids are due in about two weeks on that project. So we anticipate that that would be before you, February 3rd at the earliest, which is our next meeting. Depending on how long it takes us to analyze those bids and do some checking, it may be the 24. Then that construction will begin May 31st. Although we may actually begin demolition of the house on the property maybe a little bit before that, um, if we're able to. With a plan to hopefully have all of that one done by August 15th, so a little bit before school starts. This is a project that absolutely has to get done over the summer because it is so disruptive to the traffic flow at Oakville Elementary. If we think about the existing site and how traffic flows in and out, that entrance on the west side off of Jaeger, we're moving that further west. So we've got to get, this is a job we have to get done over the summer. So we're getting close to bidding that. The other project that we're getting close to bidding is the restroom work and security vestibule at Oakville High School. We actually have a meeting next week to finalize a couple of things before those bids go out, or the bid packages go out and we advertise really soon. So that those bids would be due in the middle of March. So we would anticipate that we'll have those bids, uh, for the board on April 14th. Don't think we'll have them at the March, I think it's 17 meeting, probably going to be April, that one again. That's going to be, uh, start right after school is out. And then again, that's restroom renovations, and we're hoping to get that, um, wrapped up there before school starts. That would be kind of helpful there. And, uh, moving along to some others, we had a conceptual conversation today with architects, engineers, electrical engineers, project managers on, if, if we think about this security vestibule concept, how do we standardize that as much as possible across all the buildings? Knowing that there are some intricacies that will cause some variations at each building. They're all designed slightly differently, um, in the existing condition. So moving now to that same condition, trying to gain some economies, um, in terms of simplistic stuff. We worked on that quite a bit today. At Beerbomb, uh, we continue to just be frustrated by the county and the requirements they place on us relative to anything from how many trees we have to plant and how far apart they can be, minimally they can be. To again, them wanting us to do a, redo a sidewalk where we're doing no work anywhere near it. So like, much like we did at Rogers, we're arguing around the sidewalk on Union. So Beerbomb is going to bid this spring. Hegeman's in the next group of schools that we're planning. Hegeman, Troutline, Washington, we're kind of well down the road in terms of site plans with Troutline and Hegeman. We were concerned about that kind of new exit, um, to kind of, um, come out on the south side of Hegeman. Uh, and whether or not we would meet site requirements, because there's a little bit of a curve there. So the engineering study, we do, our plan there does meet those site requirements, so we're good there. However, because we are cutting across the sidewalk there and are going to have to do some sidewalk, we expect that we're going to have to do a lot of sidewalk work at Hegeman that we probably won't be able to get out of because we are definitely disturbing that sidewalk as part of that work. In terms of other bids, kind of coming later this spring, uh, we're getting close to bidding Blades. The front entrance of OES will be a separate project than the parking piece, and then Point Rogers and Beerbomb. With, as I mentioned, Troutline. Troutline, Hegeman, and Washington coming in the next. And then in terms of funding wise, since the bond sale, we've earned a whopping eleven thousand dollars in interest on our roughly thirty-five-plus million dollars that's been invested, kind of over that time. You can see we've incurred almost two-point-four billion dollars. You will recall in a previous conversation, we talked about the cost of construction and the overall contingency. We met today, kind of have another, some other ideas, kind of about how to do some things there. Probably going to talk to the, talk with the finance committee about those next week. Probably hinted what that's going to look like in a report on February third. So with that, that kind of wraps up Prop S. Kind of been in this lull period. We're about to do a whole bunch of bidding, and then a bunch of work's going to start over this summer. I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm curious, did, I think we did, but would you tell me again, did we resolve those sidewalk problems on Pine Road?
You don't have to do them.
Thank you.
I have kind of a question I probably should ask before now. How much of a disruption is the security vestibule going to be since I see the completion dates are mostly in December? Is that going to be super large, or?
So that, the big file that's in the, on E-Board isn't completely up to date. Things evolve almost every two, we meet with architects every two weeks, and things kind of evolve every time there. We do have some things that we are going to be doing the work during the school, because there's just, there's just no way around it. Beerbomb is kind of the prime example. Beerbomb is probably going to be our first site where there will be a substantial disruption for ten-plus months, probably. Because in order to do what we want to do at Beerbomb, we're getting, we're going to tear the front end of the building off. And we can't tear it off and rebuild it in the summer. So that one's going to be a substantial disruption, kind of know that from the start. We'll have some others around the district, depending on how we end up laying with construction. One of the things that we talked about, especially with our, our kind of mechanical, our MEP specialist today, mechanical, electrical plumbing, was they're bidding jobs now for the summer, and the, they're not having as many contractors bid as what they would anticipate because contractors are having trouble getting equipment, especially HVAC equipment right now. So six months out, people are being a little bit hesitant. So all of our stuff is probably going to be somewhat fluid based on the construct, what's happening within the construction industry. So we'll be probably moving things around, and we get all these bids in, we maybe go phew, or we may be going, oh my God, this is horrible. We gotta figure something out here. So we'll, we'll know a lot more in about twelve days where we're gonna, where we're gonna, that, that should be our first either sticker shock or maybe sigh of relief.
All good?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. So you're doing COVID too?
I am.
All right.
So COVID-wise, we've got a little bit of data that we want to run through. From a historical perspective, this is what the pandemic has looked like since April of twenty, or at least we have data going back that far. So in the more recent histories, you can see things were starting to go up around Thanksgiving, and then really took off after Christmas. We have seen it decline in the last week. And we believe that that is probably a true decline. However, there are two zero days currently in those seven-day numbers. So we know those are skewing it a little bit. So once that passes out of the data, we should turn to something. It looked like it was kind of leveling off, for sure. It kind of dropped from the peak, leveled off a little bit, was kind of maybe moving steady in the two-zero days, really kind of dropped it down. Positivity rate peaked and is, appears to be declining, or maybe leveling off, kind of around low thirties the last few days. CDC case rate then somewhat mirrors that long historical piece. This is where we've been since August with that trend line. Again, you can see things started to go up after Thanksgiving and after Christmas. So if we look at it since the first of November, you can see that a little bit, you know, that closer detail. Our internal dashboard for last week saw the highest number of cases that we've ever seen over the course of the pandemic. And our internal data that we track among students, you can see the massive increase among our students since we've come back from the break. If we look at considerations as we think about moving forward and things that we've talked about before, there are a number of state statutes, the Board of Education, significant authority to make health and safety rules, and our policies indicate that we will follow the guidance of health departments. Board had taken action most recently on January fourth, and that largely mirrored the action that the board had taken on December ninth, with some slight tweaks there. We look at where we are today. All of our buildings are masked by the one percent threshold, and that will be through the thirty, through the end of this month. Then we will look at the cases on January thirty-first, essentially looking at what our cases are next week. Look at those on January thirty-first, and if anybody's above that one percent threshold, they would be masking for another five days. We believe that we're getting closer and closer to approaching where we're going to have different masking statuses by building. So if we were using the data today, from this morning, we have fourteen buildings that would trigger if we were using the data this week. Using the data from next week to make the decision on the thirty-first though. And we just don't have kid data from three schools yet. I don't know how those go. And as was mentioned previously, we've seen over forty districts across the, across the state do some level of temporary closure just because they've got so many people out and they can't staff. That's not unheard of. We have, that has been the case. That's happened in years past with large flu outbreaks within school where student and staff attendance really, really drops, and folks have closed for three or four days to run the flu. So we're starting to see some of that, or we've definitely seen some of that last week and this week, relative to that inability to staff. So our recommendation as kind of we look forward is really no change to the January fourth resolution. Again, just to reiterate what that means, on January thirty-first, we'll look at the prior week to determine if, at the building level, were they above that threshold? If they weren't, we'll leave the mask recommended status. However, employees will continue to mask. And then if they are above, we'll leave mask required status for another five days. So essentially, we're in that zone now where we're looking at things at the five-day level instead of the ten-day level. January thirty-first will be our first look relative to that. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
I have no questions.
I only have one. I kind of want to poke at the face coverings being required for all district employees from the aspect of teachers in classrooms continuing to wear masks. Is the reason for that, well, I guess it might be two. One might be show support for students who are going to continue to mask because of personal situations, and the other to try and keep teachers and others, staff and admins in school not getting sick. Is that accurate, or is there others?
Our goal is to be able to keep as many employees working as possible. I, I think as we look, and you know, kind of on this twenty-one-day cycle now, so we'll be looking at the resolution again on February third and again on February twenty-four. Depending on how case counts are, I could see us recommending taking that out at one of those times, depending on where our case counts are.
Okay.
And.
Go ahead.
Really depending on how we can staff and how we're running relative to staffing.
Okay. This was something I caught on the last one, but I didn't think it was worth bringing it up at that one because what's happened in the last few weeks was pretty predictable. So as we get to that February first timeframe, it probably starts to matter more.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Kevin that we, I mean, I don't want to see a never-ending portion of our resolution saying our staff has to wear a mask. I mean, once the numbers start to fall and we feel more comfortable with our staffing situations, I think it's beneficial to our kids to be able to see their teacher's mouths with reading and phonics and all those things, so.
As long as they don't get sick and then don't see their face or their mouth.
I know. And that's what I'm saying. As we see things fall.
Yeah.
I think we need to have an eye, our eye on dropping that particular.
It's pretty, so just some facts where we're currently at. We've got a good number of people vaccinated. Omicron is flying through the population. When Dr. Bressler said we have eighteen-hundred-and-twenty employees, I did the quick math that five-point-nine percent of our employees were, had COVID infections last week. And it was just a little less than that the prior week. So it's pretty easy to say ten percent of our employees actually have tested for that in the last two weeks, which starts to say that it's more than that because there's people who are asymptomatic, there's people who had it back in Christmas, back after Thanksgiving. We've still got two weeks, three weeks, two to four weeks to run on this. So there's going to be more. And it's coming down, frankly, just the data that the people who are vaccinated and especially boosted tend to not have the hospitalizations or the deaths. I think we've all now heard about more people dying and with the occasional, somebody in a different state that you don't know. Everyone that I've heard of dying that I know about was unvaccinated.
Unvaccinated.
That's just the way it's rolling, so. As I kind of look at this, I think that those numbers are going to come down so fast because of all that immunity from vaccinations, Omicron. That's why it stops because it doesn't have anybody else to go to and it starts to dive down. So when we get to that, I question, you know, we're going to have a lot of staff members that will have had this that quite frankly are not susceptible to getting it again so long as another variant doesn't come along. But thankfully, there's nothing on the horizon right now that's a concern. Right, exactly. Knock on wood. So then we get to the risk-reward part. We get to the fact that a lot of people are just as sick and tired of this as we are. There's going to be classrooms where a teacher very well might be the only person in that room with a mask on once that building goes mask optional. And I think there's even a little bit here of a celebration aspect that once these things actually drop, we may actually be in a good spot for a little while and be kind of nice to have everybody able to celebrate that a little bit together as opposed to kind of setting teachers and staff apart. So that's my thoughts. We do have that February third meeting, which is only three days after the earliest that we would have schools going mask optional. So I guess I'm not against waiting to that point, but I'd kind of ask everyone else what, if you have strong feelings on it, to kind of speak up on them.
How close are we to having critical staffing problems? I mean, where we would start thinking about either getting creative in staffing or looking at buildings that might close?
At ours?
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, I know that's kind of flippant, but it's every day whether or not we have enough people to do anything. Because one of the things that's kind of been helpful is the change in kind of return isolation requirements for those who have tested. An ability to come back after five days. So if they're not showing symptoms or symptoms are resolving. So we have a good idea then of who may be coming back without on any given day, but we don't know who may be not coming on any given day. So we definitely had some days last week that were a challenge. But I mean, to use like the cafeteria here as an example, if you look at the services that you provide and the options that kids have, it varies on a day-to-day basis based on how many people we got among our cafeteria staff. Because we tend to push people out from this location to help in other locations so that, because it's easier for a handful of us to work downstairs here and get back to our offices than any other building. So whether it's having to cancel bus routes or having to do stuff with food service, that is a daily occurrence.
So the next couple of weeks are going to be crucial to see which way we go with this. But the numbers are at least trending positively in the right direction.
The numbers so far this week seem to indicate that we may have peaked last week.
Or early this week, because the curve has dropped in the last three days. Unless it starts going upwards, and then hopefully by the end of the month, we should be in a much better place than we are now.
We have to get past the sixteenth and seventeenth where there's no data. I mean, that's created kind of an anomaly.
We would know what's going on by then because it'd be two weeks after that.
I think another aspect to consider is the fact that we're about to get testing set up for staff and students who want it. Obviously, there are people right now who just are not going to be able to get access to a test because of everything that's going on. So we're going to get a little bit more of a, well, everyone's not testing. At least part of those people are, it's hard to get a test unless you want to wait a significant period of time or you're four days out from getting a test, and by that time you'll be, you won't even have symptoms anymore, so you won't, whatever it may be. So I think we'll really get through better data hypothetically when we get testing set up for our staff if they want it.
And do we have an end time frame of how long we're going to be doing the testing at twenty-nine hundred?
I think we're set to be able to run it the rest of the, some, rest of the school year.
On the same schedule, Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
We could have more days at the day demands.
But we won't know any of that until we go through this coming week and see what the demand is.
They can handle up to three hundred tests a day.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yep. I think so. Anybody else?
Are there any, I'm just going to ask if there's any strong feelings on the, the teacher-staff part, or?
I.
All right, so February 3rd.
I think. I was, I feel strongly enough that I would enjoy tabling it until February 3rd because then we still have time where the metrics would allow us to do that prior to. We might as well wait and see.
See what the status is.
I mean, even if we were to make that motion.
No, we do, but I had just thrown it out there about the potential to change, and I guess what I'm looking at is.
We'll revisit it on the 3rd.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the COVID-19 resolution as per example.
And I'll second.
Was Kevin done with this?
I was, essentially I was. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't lost, if there was feelings about looking at it tonight or if everyone was good February 3rd, I just want to make sure that we're watching it, which it sounds like from Dr. Gaines that they're going to be watching it too, so.
I think the next, the next two weeks of data are going to be crucial to see which way we go with it.
I agree, and I would propose that in our February 3rd meeting, we would have two different resolutions we could vote on so that we don't have to, so we're prepared in case we want to make that change.
I like that idea, Peggy.
Yeah. Something we can talk about a little bit more. Okay, that sounds good. So we have a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are up to action items by consent.
I'd like to pull 7F.
Okay. Are you good with 7G?
Pardon?
Are you good with 7G?
There isn't, there isn't a G for 7G.
There's not a G? How did I get a G? I said it at the beginning of the night, it's going to be one of those nights.
I bet that you're trying to mock me.
I'm sorry, it's just bad. Okay.
Don't prolong it any, but don't make it any in this.
It should have been one of the easiest meetings in months, has turned out that way. All right.
Thanks, Kevin.
So any others? Okay, can I get a motion to approve 7A?
I'd like to approve items A through E.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, 7F, consider overnight field trips.
Okay, so I wanted to pull 7F because I had concern, and unfortunately it slipped through the cracks and I didn't ask it, of the Mr. Bance Breakfield at Oakville and the one student going to the state competi, well, it's not really, it's the OHS band trip going to the music, Missouri Music Educators Association workshop and conference. And my concern was the fact that on paper, it looks as if Mr. Breakfield and the student would be going so, going together alone in a vehicle to Tantara, and then from there, so I clarified with Mr. Breakfield, and there will be actually three chaperones in the vehicle, and then once the kids get to the, the venue, the Missouri Band Master Association has their own chaperones that provide supervision, so all Missouri music teachers, students in the all-state have their own schedule and rehearsal and activities, while staff actually attend conferences. So I just wanted to clarify that that student, and just for really obvious reasons of making sure nothing could ever be accused if we allowed one staff member to take one student somewhere. So it's not as it appears on paper at all. I can vouch for the situation, my daughter attended a lot of these in her high school years, and she was always with several, she, they do break off, all the kids go in one direction and all the adults go in another, and it's highly supervised by other teachers. So anyway, that's the only reason I wanted to clarify that particular field trip request.
Thank you for the clarification, Peggy.
You're welcome.
That's very important, so appreciate that.
Make a motion to approve it?
Is that the only one you had a question on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve a gen, action item 7F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, communications. For non-agenda items, we have patron comments, and Suzanne McInnis signed up. Hi Suzanne. You know the rules, right? Okay.
I just want to thank you guys. I'm in dedication. I know the last couple of years have been really rough on everybody, and I know you guys have gotten the brunt of it, even though a lot of the decisions are not yours particularly, a lot of it's behind the scenes. I do want to thank you for continuing to follow the health department guidelines and keeping us open. Listening to the DUCI legislation the last couple of weeks kind of concerns me, there's a lot of concerning things. No matter what the state decides, I really hope that our substitute teachers continue to meet the high standards that they currently do, and that they just will not become warm bodies in the classroom because that's not fair to our students. So I really hope, I don't care what the DUCI legislation, I really hope that you guys stick to your standards. I appreciate that you guys have listened to us, that you have been approachable. Listening and agreeing are not always the same thing, they are not the same thing. But you guys have listened, even if we, you haven't agreed with us, you've listened and I do appreciate that, and I've found that a lot of other districts do not get that same thing. But I would like to see the board listening session come back because it's kind of changed into the focus group, and I think even if it's the first 30 minutes of the board listening session, or call it something else, that I feel like there should still be a back-and-forth that people can actually come and talk to you, because talking to you and getting a back-and-forth is so much different than an email, or especially a Facebook post that goes every direction but where it needs to go. Because I feel like a lot of people in our community do not know the steps, the standards, what happens behind the scenes, why the decisions are made, because you get a little glimpse of everything that's happening behind the scenes, week by week. You guys give us a little glimpse, and I feel like having that back-and-forth again would be helpful. And, you know, one of the other things we lost throughout this is the let's, let's talk feature, I know I was the main person that used it, and maybe I'm dismissing it, and, you know, but it's just, who do you go to? If you have a question, where do you go? Who do you talk to? I know because I figured out the chain of command over here, but a new parent to the district, or a new elementary parent, doesn't know the pecking order of going to the principal, going to a teacher, going to a principal, then going up the chain of command, instead of what's being presented is just go straight to the board, and making it a board decision when there's a lot of other steps that it should go to first. So I think that it would be a good educational experience for everybody, the community, and everybody to kind of get that together. So thank you, as always, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the suggestions, too. Okay. Next up is authorization to go into closed session.
I think we skipped committee reports.
Yeah, we skipped committee reports.
Kevin.
One of those nights, Kevin.
Kevin. I'd like to take over.
One of those nights.
Committee reports. There's ballgames to talk about, Kevin.
I don't have one, but I'm sure the other guys do.
You have a policy?
Let me talk a little bit about advocacy. As of yesterday at 4:00, there were 444 Senate bills filed, and there's about 69, 69 to 70 of them that will affect school boards. On the House side, there's about 1,059 bills that have been filed, 198 will probably affect us. Some interesting numbers before I, and I'll stop with that. In the House, there are 44 bills affecting curriculum. These are legislators telling schools what they should and should not teach. There are 22 about elections. If they, if the legislature has their way, they will move our elections to November, they will break us into sub-districts, and they will tell us, these are the things you can't make decisions on, those are the bills that are facing us. One of the ironies, there are nine bills that deal with firearms, and there's also nine bills that deal with school safety, which I find to be just incredible. On the Senate side, their emphasis, 19 of their bills are on curriculum, and there's almost nothing in safety and security for school districts. In short, I've been tracking this for probably 10 years, I have never seen so many focused bills aimed toward public schools as long as I've got these numbers, and I've gone back and looked at the old spreadsheets. It is imperative that when we talk about communicating with our stakeholders, that we also talk about advocacy. If, if we don't, I think we're going to see some bills that will hurt us in the long-term this year, and I'll let it go at that.
Thank you.
So we had policy tonight, and we went over three policies. One, we kicked back, or kicked out actually, a policy change request, and then one we approved after Jennifer did a whole lot of homework for us, we appreciate that. I meant to thank you during that meeting, I apologize I didn't, that really made it work, and actually I'll probably share it with you because you guys are going to be asked to approve it next meeting, and so I'm going to share that data that Jennifer put together so you all can see it with an explanation. And then the last one was, we needed some legal advice on, and we got that, and we approved that, or we will be asking for this approval next week too, on the 3rd of February, so we will do that. And then on another note, I've made my own committee this week, I nominated myself the president, I'm kidding. But anybody that pays any attention, the intersection at Milburn and Jaeger by Oakville Elementary is a chronic.
It's terrible.
Site of accidents. I've been working on it since 2016 with the county, I've talked to Ernie Tracus about it, I've talked to his assistant, and nothing, they do, they've done studies and they don't do anything, they say it's just driver error, and that's, in my opinion, no longer an acceptable answer, and a group of young parents that have little kids at Oakville Elementary, I just know them, they're my neighbors, and so we're all going to sort of really start on this and try to get things moving and shaken about that intersection before a kid gets killed. And then as well, while we're at it, I figure we'll throw in the stoplight in front of it hard, might as well, for good measure. So anyway, that's a.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I know, good luck on all of it, but you know what?
I think you have better luck on the Oakville Elementary, on Jaeger and Milburn, I really think.
Yeah, we have to do something, and I mean, so, yeah, I have a bunch of young parents that are willing to step up and also start advocating for, for change of some kind, so.
That's good.
Okay. Shall I read us into closed?
You want me to do that?
Are we ready to go?
What's another 30 seconds to hear about our sports ball teams? Let's do it.
Why don't we just put that on the agenda?
You know, just do it in the future, I'm here for a while, two more years. So for girls wrestling at both Oakville and Melville, at Melville, we had a female student athlete hit 100 wins in her career, which I'll be very interested to hear how that ranks all-time in the state, that's extremely impressive. Meanwhile, at Oakville, Oakville girls wrestling is in their inaugural season, so that's been a joy to watch. Sticking with wrestling, Ethan Venables is a sophomore boys wrestler at OHS, and he is one of the best wrestlers in the state, he is 29-0 going into the home stretch of the season. I've been to a lot of Melville and Oakville girls swim at our beautiful, I was going to say aquarium, that's wrong, I'm just going to say pool, there's probably a fancier name for it. Anyways, so Melville is off to one of their best seasons in program history, I think they're 9-1 or 10-1, which is extremely impressive. Then on the basketball side, all of the teams have been a joy to watch. Larry joined me at the Oakville and Melville game right after our last board meeting on a Friday. Congrats to the Oakville girls for beating Melville and the Melville boys for beating Oakville boys. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I think it's time for authorization for a session.
Okay, you want me to do that? Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meeting and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees statute 610.0213, legal action, causes of action, or litigation statute 610.0211. Jeff?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry?
Patrick? Yes.
I need a seating chart. Okay, motion, we're in close.
Got one that Tori gave me. Yeah.